I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. I'm Delegate Gary Howar, I represent the 56th District, which is, well, it lies in Mineral County, and I am the House Co-Chair, or the House Chair of the Redistricting and Co-Chair of the Joint Committee. This is my counterpart.
Yes, hi. Charles Trump from Berkeley Springs, Morton County, that's 15th and 12th District. And I want me to go ahead and introduce senators. And we've got, first of all, a welcome to everybody. I would be delighted to have people here who've come to, as we have, hear and learn. We have six members of the West Virginia Senate, I believe, who are present this evening. Five besides me. To my immediate right is Senator Caputo from Marion County. Senator Caputo represents a district that is Marion and Monongalia County. Somewhere in the room is Senator Bill Hamilton. There he is. Bill, stand up. And Bill is, represents an adjoining district here. I guess Lewis County is not part of your Senate District, is it? But Senator Hamilton lives in the adjoining district, which includes Upshur County and many others. To my far right is Senator Eric Tarr. And Senator Tarr is from Putnam County. He has, represents a district that currently includes Putnam, Mason, Jackson, and part of Roan counties.
That's correct.
Don't leave any unmet.
No, it won't.
All right. And to somewhere hereabouts is Senator Phillips.
Right here.
There's Senator Phillips. Stand up, raise your hand. Senator Phillips is, represents a district that includes Logan. He's in group, he's from Logan County. He represents Logan, Logan, Lincoln, Boone, I think part of Wayne, and maybe even part of Mingo, too. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
In the West Virginia Senate. And to the immediate left of Senator Tarr is Senator Glenn Jeffries. And Senator Jeffries represents Putnam and, a district that has Putnam and Canola County. And anyway, we're all grateful for all the senators who've come. And we've got a few of them here that have been to every single one of these redistricting meetings wherein we're trying to get as much comment, feedback, and input as we can for the citizens of the state before we start the process of drawing new maps. So with that, I'll turn the mic back over to the presiding officer today, Senator Howe. Chairman Howe is, I think, going to introduce House members who are here and then run this public hearing.
Thank you. He's only got 34 people to remember where they're from. I've got 100, so if I get this wrong a little bit. On the committee, we have Joe Stappler. He represents part of Mon County, back there in the back. Bill Anderson serves on the committee. He's Wood County. Brett Boggs.
Right here.
Oh, there he is. Okay. Braxton County.
And Gilmore.
And Gilmore. Delegate Kelly, he is Tyler in Dogridge. And then, I see Minority Leader Doug Scaff walked in. He's in Canola County. He also serves on the committee. And then we have some other members here who are not on the committee. We've got Delegate Martin, which is Upshur County. Delegate Hannah, which is Webster and Nicholas, I think a little bit of Upshur as well, I believe. Delegate Phillips, which is Barber County, and a little bit of Tucker, I think. Delegate Riley, which is Harrison County. Delegate Bertheimer, which is here in Lewis County. And I think that's all from the House, unless I've missed anyone. Okay. Well, I briefly want to go over the ground rules and procedures for nights very, very run smoothly as possible. This is a public hearing on redistricting. The purpose of the hearing and other such hearings being conducted around the state is for you to share with the members of the West Virginia House of Delegates and the West Virginia Senate your views and opinions and ideas about redistricting. We are eager to hear your views, opinions, and other concerns. We are welcome to comment and share our opinions upon Senate districts, House districts, and congressional districts. We will be applying what we hear, or what we hear to the maps as we draw them. And we are using Rule 84, which is used to govern the public hearings in the House of Delegates during the session. Pursuant to House 84, members will not be permitted to respond to questions during the hearing. As you know, the United States Census Bureau has not yet delivered the actual census data for the 2020 decennial census to the states. Normally, the U.S. Census Bureau delivers that data in April of the following year. We are way beyond April and have not received the census data from the Census Bureau. The best information we have of the census data will be formally delivering the data to the 50 states on September 30th. We are hoping that we will have access to census data sooner, but when we receive it is something beyond our control. Therefore, the committee will not be presenting or discussing any proposed maps. However, even though we do not have the data which the legislature must use to draw the maps for the Senate and House districts and congressional districts, we felt it important to start holding public hearings so that you, the citizens of West Virginia, will have a full opportunity to make whatever comments you wish to make and share your views and thoughts and ideas with us. We are here tonight to hear from you. We're grateful for your attendance here and your input. If you would like to submit any suggestions or proposed maps during the Joint Redistricting Committee, please follow the directions on the brochure that was given to you at the door. Each person will have, how many minutes? Five. Five minutes. Each person will have five minutes to speak. When the red light comes on, that means your time has expired and you'll need to conclude your remarks. With that, I'd like to recognize our first speaker. Do we have a list? I've got it. You've got it.
We have, we have only one.
We have one?
So we have, Thornton has two hours.
Please don't do that.
It'll be a lot closer to five minutes than two hours, I can assure you. It's always a pleasure to be in Lewis County. A few miles away from here is a place where, I mean, since we're in, it's called Stonewall Resort. Remember Stonewall's a Confederate, his wife, I mean, his sister was a Ute, so I want to, you know, cover both bases. But their step-grandmother was one of my cousins, and she's buried, you know, a few miles away from here at Jackson's Mill. And so it's always a pleasure to be in Lewis County. I've been involved in redistricting matters for the last, this will be the fifth census. So when I was 31, it was the census that ended in '80. And when I was 41, it was the one that was '90. Then '51, 2000, although there wasn't much participation then because we had the attack on the World Trade Center and everybody was obviously much more focused on that than about, you know, what the district collect. And then 10 years ago, I was involved in the, for the fourth time after the 2010 census, and submitted plans for redistricting Congress and the House of Delegates and the State Senate. And there were court challenges to what the legislature did, and I was a party to all the, to the challenge to the congressional redistricting, to the challenge to the House of District, House of Delegates redistricting, and to the State Senate redistricting. Senator Trump has suggested that, you know, we submit exhibits. So what I'm going to do tonight is basically just submit exhibits from 10 years ago to show you what was before the legislature that I put forward. So, and then I, and I told Senator Trump I would email him this very thick thing, 55 pages, because I have comprehensive plans for the State Senate and for the House of Delegates. So the, this two-page document says population summary. Do I handle which one? We'll take it. We're going to give it to our staff so we don't lose it. But if you, Thornton, if you, what you emailed to us, I think we have the capability of posting to our website. That's why, so the other thing, see, that's the State Senate. That, and that was prepared with, when I was giving instruction, working with Senator McKay, because we weren't allowed to deal with the redistricting committees, I mean, the folks in the base of the State Capitol, which is where the redistricting office was. So I had to go through Senator McKay. And so I told him basically what I wanted for the State Senate, and then he submitted, he submitted, I sent it to him, then he sent it to the redistricting committee, then the redistricting committee sent, I mean, the redistricting office. Then they, they did the technical work, sent back to him, sent back to me, and then I presented that in June, June, now, of course, we're in August, June of 2011. And that's, again, for those, it is not the fault of the redistricting committee. This is, you know, I've been doing this, like I said, for 40 years. We've never had a problem with delays since. This is not their fault. And blatant legislature law things, this is not their fault. Then the other thing is my plan that I emailed to the members of the then-redistricting committee, beginning with then-Chairman Brent Boggs. And it's 55 pages. It's my entire plan for dividing the state into 100 single-member districts with the population and the voting districts in each county. And I will email that, copy that to you. And that basically is why, you know, I came. If anybody wants to ask me questions, that's fine with me. Well, you've got an hour and 50 minutes left. So far, Thornton, you're the only one that has signed up. I do appreciate this, for your pride in us. And we're going to make sure our staff has it. It may make it easier for them if you could send it in a digital format so that they can post it to the website. But I suspect there would be a lot of, not just legislators, but citizens of West Virginia who'd be interested in reviewing this. Yeah, I just want to make a record that I did submit that back, back in August of 2011. There's, the House of Delegates did not have redistricting committee meetings, and so if you look at their archives, there's nothing with respect to what I submitted. You had the amendment submitted by the Republican, then the Republican minority, which they had their 100 single-member district plan, this is on the archive. But I submitted this thing before then, and I just wanted to make that part of the record. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you for attending. You want to make it feel, feel like, let me, just, we'll say a couple of things. We had, literally, Thornton, Mr. Cooper was the only person who signed in the sheet as interested in speaking. But I know we have some other folks from the area here, and I think unless there's any ejection from the legislators, we'd be delighted to hear from anybody who has something they would like to share with the delegates and senators who are here about redistricting, even if you didn't put your name on a sign-in sheet. If anybody wants to volunteer to share something with us. And if not, that's okay, too. I will, I will remind everybody to pick up, if you will, if you didn't get one already, one of these brochures. It has on it some general information about redistricting. But it has on it the, an explanation of the manner in which you can file exhibits or maps or comments with the Joint Committee on Redistricting. So, you know, we think it's, we've all felt that it was important to travel to different parts of the state to be able to hear in person from people who wanted to come talk to us. But we also are going to accept and consider, in our committee's work, information that you may want to submit through the website. And as I understand it, we have the capability of accepting maps, even maps that citizens want to submit for us to consider. We're going to post them to the website, and they'll be available for everybody, not just legislators to look at and make comments upon. Eric.
Hi, I'm Agnes Queen, A-G-N-E-S.
Thank you very much. Good. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay. I'm sorry. Oh, Lewis County, we're working really hard, all of us. We have a great team here in Lewis County right now. We work with our delegates and our senators very well. And, you know, anytime anything happens like this, it does affect your, your counties and your region. I know we're part of Region 7. I don't know how you're going to look at the map or how you decide, population-wise, do you, you know, where we're at, we're at the starting point of Quarter H, which is huge. Once Quarter H opens, we, it begins in Lewis County. So what's going to happen here, if you're in Lewis County right now, that's where Stonewall Resort is. So when it opens up, what's going to happen here is going to be amazing. And we've got to be ready for that. And even with this redistricting, that's going to play a part in what happens to Lewis and Upshur. See, my counterpart's back there from Upshur. You know, there, it's going to be huge for this region, and we're just very concerned that, you know, you don't forget about us in the smaller center of the state counties. We know, we don't have the population that Canola County and Cavill and Morgantown have, Marion, Monongalia, Marion. Those counties are bigger than we are, and they have a whole lot more population than we do. Don't forget about those of us in the smaller counties. That means something. I mean, we've got things going on in our counties as well, and we're trying to get things even more expedited of what we've gotten going with infrastructure and things like that. So that was just my concern, was don't forget about the little guys when you're drawing out your map and say, hey, we're grown here just because we need that amount of number of voters to make that work. You know, if we're not like counties, maybe that's not the right thing. You know what I'm saying? So just remember that whenever you're drawing your lines, because we're not just another number. You know, we're a county that's working to make things better for our citizens in the state. Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you. And on behalf of all of us, would say thank you for your service to the citizens of Lewis County. I've often said, I think that the job of commissioner is the hardest job there is in all of government, because you're close to the people and you're the first person they reach out to to address issues. And we're, we know, everybody in this committee and in the legislature understands the importance of the work that is done by county officials. So thank you. Anybody else? We've got time. We've got time, and we've got the room. All right. Mr. Chairman?
Well, we're just going to keep it open because somebody could decide to come in late, so we'll have to wait here for a little bit, make sure it's underway.
We do it the way we do, they do it in law school in the Socratic method, and we could start calling them. Force them to a microphone to tell us what they think.
They'll tell you what they think.
We got one here.
Well, good evening. And my name is Susie Sivekow. And I'm County Commissioner from Barber County. And I certainly concur with Agnes's comments. And even though Quarter H is only a few miles in Barber County, we have supported Quarter H because we think it's the right thing to do for our state and our area. My husband and I also own a home in Kanane Valley. And if you've been to Kanane Valley in the last two years, it's unbelievable the amount of traffic that is through that area. And partially, I feel, because of Quarter H and all the outdoor activities that go on there. But as far as Barber County's concerned, we are seeing the progress of coal in our area with two mines, well, we have one mine in operation between Barber and Taylor County, but also a new mine opening in Barber County near Century that hopes to employ 300 to 400 people. So that is just huge for a county of 16,000 people. We just had a meeting today, and I have with me Reggie Trefethan, who's on the Barber County Economic Development, well, he's the co-chair of that committee. But we had a meeting today discussing the results of a housing study that the County Commission had supported, because housing in Barber County is a problem now with all these jobs that we're getting in Barber County. And we're happy to have, but people need a place to live also. So we see some positive things happening there. We are part of Barber County and then, I'm not sure how many counties you have, Chris and Tucker County?
Five.
Five. And Chris Phillips is our delegate and works hard for us. So we're here to support him, too, to move forward. It's important for our state, not only Barber County, but surrounding counties and the state as a whole. So we see good things happening, and we're happy to be part of it. Thanks for hosting this meeting. I was really hoping we're able to be here and speak. So could you all share with us what you anticipate happening? I mean, will there be a big shift, or do you know, or just?
Yeah, let me, let me try to address that a little bit. First of all, thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome.
And thank Commissioner for your service to the citizens of Barber County. As Chairman Howe mentioned at the...
Pardon me, it's interesting.
It is, doesn't it?
Yes.
It is. It's fascinating. As Chairman Howe mentioned at the outset, we don't have the data yet from the Census Bureau. And so, you know, I don't think it's a stretch to say that in large degree, what will happen is that the data that we get on the population and where they are, not just how many people in each county, but where they are within each county, will drive the work that this committee has to do in configuring maps. And so it's, it's really, you know, we're hoping, we're hoping that, and the Census Bureau has sent us some information, they issued, there was a press release today. We think we may have data from the Census Bureau by the end of this week, which means that if we do, there are a couple ifs, if we do and if our software works the way we expect and hope that it will, you know, that process of trying to draw maps and lines can begin perhaps as early as next week. We'll see. We don't have any committee meetings scheduled for next week, but there are staff in the legislature in both houses who have been training on the software and have developed, we think, the expertise to be able to use it. So we're getting close to that, which is sort of a point to begin. We have, I think, three or four more weeks of public hearings that we have scheduled around the state. And I think it's, I hope, I don't think I'm alone in this thought, but I'm thinking that before anybody gets fixated on a map or a single idea, we defer that until at least we've been around the state and heard from everybody who wants to weigh in on it and talk to us about what they think about the current districts or what they would hope for the future districts to look like. One of the things that is going to be particularly challenging for all of us is that, and this is, everybody knows this, but West Virginia, for the next 10 years, is going to go from three to two congressional districts. Instead of having three members in the United States House of Representatives, we're going to add two. And I'm hoping, I think we're all hoping, for citizen input on what, what people think that should look like, when the legislature does and has to divide the state of West Virginia into two congressional districts. So I don't know if that's much of an answer to your question. It's, and probably if you ask people about their opinions, you know, we've got 100 members of the House of Delegates and 34 members of the Senate, and each one of us probably holds, you know, his own opinions on things that would, you know, maybe agree with or differ with those of other people. We won't know that till the committee really starts to do its work and draw maps. And ultimately, what happens is, a redistricting process is just like any other legislation. You have to have a bill, at the end of the day, a bill that can get the majority of the votes in both houses of the legislature, and then it's signed into law by the government, and that becomes the plan. And, you know, that's, that's what we're working toward. I think we're all kind of hoping that that's work we can finish maybe in the month of October. If not sooner, no later than that. But we're hoping for that. I don't know what else to say. I hope that answered some of your questions, Susie.
Thank you.
One thing I would just add to that, because in West Virginia, our Constitution does not want us to split counties and congressional districts. That makes us somewhat unique among the states. So mathematically, there's only going to be a handful of maps that actually work. The map is going to dictate what our congressional districts look more than anything else will.
So, pardon me, do you feel we'll still have the same number of districts then with...
Congressional districts will go to two, three.
Right, two. But for the House of Delegates and...
House of Delegates, there will be 100 districts. In 2018, a law was passed that we would go to 100 single-member districts. So this time, the multi-member districts will disappear.
And that's what your committee's doing, not just the congressional? You're taking for everything, not just...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I was, I was, I assumed it was just for the congressional thing, that you're going to haul them?
Nope. It'll be, it'll be all of them. And so we don't have any new maps to look at, but we should have pointed this out. We have with us here on easels, maps of the current congressional districts, House of Delegates districts, and State Senate districts. And those are the districts that have been in place for 10 years. And so anybody who wants to is, you know, invited to look, look at those carefully and if upon doing that. And the other, the other thing that is there are the sort of blowups of the districts in this geographical region of the state. Those that include Lewis County, also Barber and Upshur, the surrounding counties.
And one of the changes you'll see in the House, as given example, is Harrison County is currently a four-member House district. That will change to four individual districts that will be smaller. And I guess Monongalia County's five members, and it'll, it'll actually probably get six individual districts in growth in that area.
Okay, so I'm confused. Can you explain that, what that, what you mean? So they'll still have four in Harrison County, but they won't represent the whole county? Is that what you're saying?
They'll, they'll represent smaller areas within the county. There will be one person for that specific area, instead of four people representing a large area.
Like your fourth education would be...
Yeah, currently, in a multi-member district, if you get a ballot and say it's a four-member district, it'll be vote for four. You will now get a ballot that says vote for one, and that's the area in which you live.
Well, that's...
So that means you're going to have four different ballots in one county?
Yeah, that's going to be very difficult.
Well, you most likely already have that anyway, because of magistrateal districts and everything else, school board, all kinds of stuff like that.
So only the people in the House individual districts, only those people can vote for those House of Delegate members? Is that what I'm hearing?
The district in which you live.
Okay.
What, like, for senators that cover two counties, like Lewis, we share one, I'll share one, but if you know, he represents Harrison and Lewis. Is that, is that what you're going to say, or will Lewis end up with their own, or how's that area going to work?
Well, it's unlikely that Lewis will end up with its own, because how many, how many people do we think are...
Probably about 15,000.
Yeah. So here's the way the math works. Right now, there are 17 Senate districts. And so what the law requires, the federal constitution and our state constitution, is that when we create new districts, they have to be equal, essentially equal in population. So we know, we know that from the Census Bureau, that the state's population, total population, is 1.793 million people. 1,793,000, basically. And so if you divide 17 into that number, 17 Senate districts, what you end up with is a number that's right around 105,000 people. It'd take 100, around 105,000 people to form a Senate district. So there will still be lots of Senate districts that have multiple counties and parts of counties in them. You know, there are only two counties in the state that have enough population on their own... And so if you divide 17 into that number, 17 senate districts, what you end up with is a number that's right around 105,000 people. It'd take 100, around 105,000 people to form a senate district. So there will still be lots of senate districts that have multiple counties or parts of counties in them. You know, there are only two counties in the state that have enough population on their own to fill up a senate district, and that's, maybe there'll be three. We don't know what the numbers are going to be for Montegalia County, but Canola County, Berkeley County's probably going to have over 120,000 people, and Montegalia County's probably at a number that's pretty close to the population of a senate district. Everybody else is, it doesn't, no single county other than those three has enough people in them. So you have to draw districts that are essentially equal in population, but respect them to the extent you can, county boundaries, county integrity. You know, it's funny, West Virginia, perhaps like no other place that I'm aware of, is a place where the county in which people are from is really important to them. It's an important fact that people say, well, I'm from, you know, I'm from Wyoming County, or, you know, I'm from Cavill County. And I've told other people this, when I was in college, I had a roommate who was from upstate New York, and he said, you talk about what counties people are from, because I don't even know what county I'm from, I'm from Rochester. You know, we don't pay attention to counties, but in West Virginia, we do. It's kind of a core part of, I think, of our identities, and as Chairman Howell said, the constitution requires us to consider counties when we draw these districts, because that's, those are the, in large degree, in a rural state, the communities of interest under which people identify with each other.
What, what is the merit to come from taking your multi-delegate counties and breaking them down into individual delegate districts?
You want to go? You want to take a shot at that?
Well, I mean, it would put them closer to people. I mean, because each district is smaller and represents fewer people, so you'd have better access to your legislator and them to you.
Hi, I'm Ann Eli. I'm the House Communications Director. That was a law that we passed in 2018, and when we're done, I can give you a little bit more information about that, but that's not at all what we're here to do tonight. You all are welcome to stay and talk one-on-one with our members, but this is a public hearing, and we want to hear from members of the public. So this is not meant to be a Q and A session. You're certainly welcome, as I said, to talk with us, the staff members, talk with our legislative members, and ask questions, but we're really here to hear from the public tonight. Thank you.
Did anyone else wish to speak?
If not, I'd like to...
So I have a big mouth, so I can broadcast easily.
If you, because it's being recorded, sure.
Hi, my name is Reg Strepethan, and I'm in Barber County for the Barber County Economic Development Authority. And my question is, using the senator's example of how you'll get to the senate districts, for example, is that going to be significantly different than it was 10 years ago? I mean, just talking about the population, how much difference are we...
1.793 million is a little lower than it was 10 years ago, and I think, I wasn't in the legislature 10 years ago. We got, we had a few people here on the panel who were, but I'm thinking, my memory is, the number was about 1.8 million. And so I think the average population for a senate district when they were drawn 10 years ago was closer to 110,000. And we think it's going to be about 105,000 now. Mike, you were in the legislature. 110, yeah.
To me, it doesn't sound like that's a significant difference, though, or just...
You know, you know...
Which you never know how...
But there'll be, there'll be enormous differences in different places. That's the average overall for the state. So there are places where there's been extraordinary growth, and places where there's been pretty significant population loss. So I will, again, we're just guessing, we'll have census data soon, but I will not be surprised if when we get it, and one of the things we're going to do quickly, I hope, is just lay the current maps onto the data we have now and see, but I won't be shocked if we find that there are some senate districts that 10 years ago had 110,000 people, now have 130,000 people. And there'll be some that were drawn 10 years ago that had 110,000 people that may have 90,000 people. And that's what requires the, you know, changing of the lines, because under the equal protection clause of the United States Constitution, people are entitled to equal representation. In other words, the vote of a person who lives in any district is to have as much weight as the vote of a person who lives in another district. And the way you do that is making them equal in population.
Yeah, well, I wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you. We're good men. We're in luck and input.
Thank you.
Thornton?
I just want to clarify that the average population for senate districts was 109000 with six significant digits. It's actually 108999, the Hermitage 999, 108999 point something, they're pushing up the integer. Talking about the thousand-year flood, this is the 10,000, only once every 10,000 years are you going to come up with having three zeros, because you only have the redistricting every 10 years, and so we'll never see it again, and it won't happen. So that's not just the, you know, three significant digits, that's the six significant digits.
All right, well, I guessed a round number, and now you got, you got it to the nth degree there from somebody who knows and remembers.
Would anybody else like to...
I would just like to ask you to please be in consideration, I'm the county clerk of Lewis County, and we've just recently met, perp-wise, statewide, and our concern is the timeframe that you're in. And I know that you're aware of it, and I want you, you know, understand where we come from, when we have candidates who are going to be filing in January, they have to live in that area a certain amount of time. Not only this, but we also have our magisterial districts that we have to make sure that they are aligned, so we've got to deal with that, along with whatever you all do. So I guess my thing is just to make sure that you are aware, you know, keeping track of that calendar, especially if it goes to September before you get numbers, that we're really going to be...
We're quite aware of it. County clerks have made that clear. Was there anyone else wish to make comments? If not, thank you for coming tonight. Once again, we're grateful for the interest and your participation and your input, and if you have any additional suggestions, you can email them, and on the web, the information is on...
The address is on this brochure.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your hospitality.